I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico because it is simple and perfect for initiative among the United States.
Did I get anybody to set their phones in silent for all setting?
The next thing is the approval of the agenda.
I would make motion to approve the agenda with an amendment to three point five that we adjourn at five thirty for a tour of the library. And that's how we'd like to be agenda to.
Okay, but a motion on the table to approve the agenda with the amendment of at three point five, we adjourn to get the library tour.
And reconvene.
And then reconvene to the meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Teeman. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. The next thing is temporary adjournment to go to the library for a tour of this wonderful building. Y'all do not have to come with us and take the tour, but if you would like to, you are more than welcome, and we're getting the, it should be the full medical tour here. I'd like to call this meeting back to order. I am gonna have to ask everybody to kind of keep down a little bit more in here than what we normally do just because of the acoustics. Okay, we're moving on to the minutes. We need to approve the minutes for the governing body workshop of May twenty fifth, twenty twenty one. Does everybody had a chance to read those over?
I'll move to approve.
Accept and approve.
Okay, I have a motion by trustee Teeman to approve the minutes as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Mitchell. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Announcements and discussions, mayor's report. Let me see what I got here. There is the biggest thing on the mayor's report, I think, is I have been in discussions with Rodney Henshaw, who owns a pretty large little ranch out by Mayville. It's about three hundred acres, and it has enough water that it will help all of our problems, and, I mean, really, it will cure all of our problems, except for the problem of getting it from there to here, if we can afford it. But that is something of, I've had Ministeri put in, we had a couple of financial, what do you call, opportunities from both of the New Mexico senators that sent us some emails and some links for some, some funding, and she has applied through both senators for some funding for this, so we're looking at some other options, and, you know, we don't know where any of that, anytime you're laying on the federal government for money, you know, it's hard to depend, depend on it. So I just kind of wanna, I wanna get it in everybody's head that this is something that, that I think will really cure most of our problems, at least in the long run. It won't help anything right now, because you still have to get it here, but if we can, I'd like to move forward on this the best I could, in pretty much any way that we can legally.
Do we go over the purchase terms in the executive section?
When, yes, when we, if, once we start actually dealing for the property, any kind of negotiations, we'll go through executive, because obviously we can give highs and lows of what we can offer to, out to the public, or the public, you know, we're gonna end up paying the absolute maximum if we do. So that is one that is completely covered by the meetings, that or executive sections. But as of right now, it's just the idea, I don't think it's a, a secret in any way, but I think this is, I do wanna have as much support as I can get, obviously, especially from, from the council, but from the community as well.
Does the property already have wells on it?
It does. Currently, it has a well on there that, according to Mr. Henshaw, is producing a thousand gallons a minute, which is right at ten times what our wells are producing now. So, not just one of our wells, all of our wells, so.
The information that was given to me from Scott and Tony was that between eight wells and six springs collectively, all together, a hundred and twenty-five gallons a minute, all of them put together is all that that we are producing right now.
I mean, even if we can't transport it from there to here at this time, at least we have a place to truck water from, once we're on.
How far?
Thirteen miles from the property to the ski area.
So, a lot of pipe?
It is a lot of pipe.
But where is it?
If you look at Almorgo, back, what was it, in the fifties, Bruce?
Yeah.
That they made the, uh, decision to buy Benea Lake. That's a whole lot more mileage.
Right, the fifties, forty-nine, when the railroad, well, the railroad built Benea Lake.
And there's, that sure paid for itself, probably a thousand times over.
You know, so what Sacramento did?
Yeah, they, they have purchased water all over, that's part of our problem, is they purchased everything last year. But I think this is an opportunity that we have, that I think will pay off in the long run.
You know, you have to, that property is just past municipality of Mayville, headed east, and it has a lot of what is talked to me as an alluvium plain or drainages, you know, it's got about three drainages, that may not be on the surface, but they're.
Now, Mayville does have some water rights in that property, which is, it's not very many, but it is stuff that, they'll be safe, we're not hurting Mayville whatsoever, have no intention of hurting Mayville. I think we can work right along with them.
Absolutely.
Yeah, there is a challenge of getting it from there to here, but that's a, that's a physical challenge. Not having any water is something we can't control. Putting a pipeline is something we can, in my opinion. So, uh, do I have anything else on the mayor's report that you all can think of?
Not really.
Okay, uh, let's move on to reports. Let's start with ski cloud crop. Mr. Adams, everything?
Uh, open for pizza. The engine of engineers, they came out Thursday and made an actual visit to the site. They were production of home actual in snow. They were hoping to have delivered by July fourth, but usually they have a ship date by now, and they said with COVID and everything being backed up, they don't have a set of own ship dates. So could get pushed back, I would, uh.
We think you can get that done this summer still?
Yeah. Yeah, I hope to hear this summer. Paid for already, they sure just.
No, pay for it first?
Sometime in July, we'll get here.
But when it comes in, how, how long will it be for you to get it to service?
Two days.
Two days?
Two days, and a couple of days suggesting.
Yeah, that's good.
And then, uh, the fire over in Ridosa, it started today. It is literally right next to where the synthetic tubing and winter bar put in. You see some of those fires, you can see their conveyor, you can actually see their summer tubing right there.
What kind of timeframe to take it out at the end of the season?
Same thing, two, three days.
Okay, even weather, doesn't matter? Anything else?
That's it.
Does anybody else have any, any questions or anything on the reports?
I was just curious, you know, again with our water report, you know, I was hoping that maybe either Tony or you, you know, you.
We thought Jubal was going to be.
Yeah. The, uh, he may not have got the message, but, uh, where, uh.
He may be waiting over in the other.
Yeah, that'd be one of the ways. You know.
He knows, he knows that.
Explained loss of almost just under nine hundred thousand. If it's explained, why, I'm not curious. You know, if it's explained, then is there a reason, do we need to turn faucet off somewhere? I don't know. And then, five hundred, four hundred and thirty thousand gallons of unknown, and I can understand that. And, uh, again, I would like to emphasize, you know, if, that maybe we need to spend some money and buy a very high quality sonic water detector, you know, to, uh, help them pinpoint leaks, you know, instead of using our method at the observatory, but putting your ear on the hydrant, you know, listening.
We do have some equipment.
Okay.
That'll chase down leaks. I don't know what it is, I haven't worked that part of it.
Okay.
From what Tony has explained to me, may have something that, if everything is good as Ridosa explains, I don't even know.
Well, I was there and assumed.
If it's top of line or not. I'm all for getting top of line equipment, especially with our problems.
Well, they, we certainly, you know, they can't do their job, you know, to.
And that was something that we talked to them about today, was the water audit that was, we started it, what, two months ago, and it is still going on, and COVID slows everything down.
Sure.
But leak detection was one of the, one of the parts of it, and we verified that today.
How are they doing?
I do not know. I wish you, what was it?
So, the, the environment department had gotten a hold, after we, after we had a Zoom meeting, um, that was initiated because of when we went into level three water restrictions. We had a Zoom meeting, and there was the environment department, and the drinking water bureau, um, the village, and I believe the county, I still think the county emergency manager was on there, Sue Dryboughs and some others. And we discussed the, you know, the current condition of the water, land of water production in the village. As a result of that, there was a gentleman named Jeff Pompeo from the environment department that contacted me about a service that the state uses, they're called Moonshot Services, and it's, um, it's, it doesn't cost a municipality anything, and it's an organization that helps municipalities with leak detection, um, water laws, uh, you know, problems with meters, et cetera, of water conservation planning and things like that. So, I had them set up a meeting, we had the meeting this morning via Zoom, the mayor, and I, and Jubal, and a team of probably, there was like seven or eight of them were on there. We discussed the condition of the village water production, we discussed what to do about, what we could do about it, we discussed, um, the status of the water reclamation project, we discussed the mayor's idea, that he just discussed with you about the property with the well. One of the things that they said is that they would like to kind of do a water, uh, water audit, a lack of water loss audit. So, I had told them that we had already contracted, people with a company called the Pacific Meter, Pacific Meter Systems, that came in, and they were testing all the meters that, um, I believe Tony and Jubal gave you a report a few months back. I did not know the status of where that study was going, so I told, uh, Mission, Moonshot Services I would find out, so I went into the maintenance shop and found out from the guys that, um, Pacific Meter is still actively on the project, they will meet in the village on the twenty-third. There was a list of things that they would be needing from our utility billing department to help in, and, uh, and put down into this software they use. They're just mine, they're running mine. So, that, that project is still actively going, and there's my savior right there. There's Jubal. There's Jubal there. And so, um, we have, we are working diligently with the public first department, trying to figure out different things that we can do. We discussed that million, that million gallon number of water loss that we see consistently, and we discussed, you know, is that real, is it not, is it a software number? Because Jubal explained what, what the guys see when they record their readings each month at different, at different sites. So, um, the guys, uh, Jubal, well, I meant, the guys in that, the water loss audit is still actively going on, it's just they did get delayed, and it's supposed to pick up on the about the twenty-third.
Yeah, they're taking over responsibility for a ton of lots of water and wastewater systems up there, they have all sort of operators, so our auditors are running their plant track now, so it's put them back in about a week, so they hope to be here the twenty-third of this month, to come back and finish the well meters and all that. But yeah, everybody's getting, we're losing operators also off the state here, and everybody's pitching corners, trying to find operators, and they're not finding them.
Well, uh, well, you're coming in, I'm making this take into, you know, we got explained water loss and then the unknown, you know, when you say explained, and this is not a criticism, I think our maintenance department is the best in any municipality, I mean, you guys work hard, but when they, when they write down unexplained, or explained water loss, it's almost nine hundred.
Yeah, that's something I haven't been able to figure out for the last eight, nine years, this has been coming up on to our charts, because we, this is why I say I, I don't understand, because, but we read the meters out there daily, on a daily basis, we get their meter readings, water pumped, water came up to the town, but then when we read the meters at the end of the month, every month now, we have this million gallon discrepancy, but our well readings does not show that, and that's where this discrepancy comes from, because what we pump out there and pump up the hilltop, and what comes out the town, does not justify the million gallon water loss that we get every time we read the meters.
So that may not be an accurate number.
Yeah.
I think you, we've been.
We're trying to figure out the programming issue, or, what, we still haven't figured out what the glitch is on that, if we're reading in cubic feet or cubic gallons, we don't know what the problem is, but there shouldn't be that discrepancy, because if we have million gallon water loss every month, we'd be well worse off than we are right now, and we'd be in dire need, but our, the readings just don't justify what we read each month. I know it's just, we haven't figured that out yet, and we're still trying, and once we get these auditors down here, maybe that'll justify some things, but, and tell you that, I really can't, can't give you an answer on that, because it's been that way for eight years. And it's, it's been like three or four times that that number would be going down to five hundred thousand.
Yeah.
But here lately, it's not been going down, it's been stated right out of million gallons. And I know we don't, we have leaks in the village, but I don't see how we'd generate a million gallon loss like that every month, when our readings out here don't justify that.
Thank you for that explanation.
Do we have meters that register how much is going into the sewer block?
Into the sewer block?
Yes.
Yes, we have meters going in there, yes.
And how does that?
Uh, not going into the plant, going out the plant.
No, I, I was thinking going in.
Into the plant.
How much, how much of our sewer?
We didn't have one, but I think it got struck by lightning, and we had, as part of this pure water project, that was supposed to be part of the finishing touches, that it hasn't happened at that point yet. But if we needed to get a meter, we'd have to purchase one, it'd be probably an eight thousand dollar meter, because of the major supply coming into that plant, but it'd have to be a special type because of all the trash that's coming in.
Right.
Yeah, because you got, I'm not even sure, it'd probably have to be like a laser or ultrasonic to.
You know, another thing is, as long as our water lines being, our sewer lines, you know, you're gonna have loss there too.
And we're not as worried about that. I was just trying to.
Well, even going through the plant, what comes out of the plant, you're not losing a whole lot that's coming from what's coming and what's going out.
Right.
And so, our membrane plant, that's pushing out roughly about thirty thousand a day, and our old plant, which is running through it, so it's putting out right around eighty, ninety thousand, so, you're like, right about a hundred thousand gallons a day going through the plant.
So, with that number then, what do we push up to the tank every day?
On a daily basis, about a hundred thousand.
So, we're, we're pushing about the same amount out of sewer plant, that's what we're pushing out.
Yes, yes. I mean, I, there, there can be a little discrepancy there, because you do have, I'm thinking thirty-five, forty homes still accepting systems?
Right.
Because they don't have them, uh.
But if we were missing the million gallons of water, it, it should show up in the.
It would show up somewhere, yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you monitor our neighborhood, so to speak, as far as water consumption, or is it just a major, I don't know?
Say that again? Do you have any sub-meters that, that?
Sub, yeah.
Yeah, that split off the area?
Not really.
Or just the individual?
You wanna have a certain area they want to locate with? No, we don't have meter like that, we don't have each location, we don't have a zone per se, each meter zone. We tried to do that in the past, but when it comes to freezing issues and all that, we don't know if it would justify, you know, one line of freeze, you're not gonna get the flow to that line, so, I mean, we never really did put a zone system in here.
Would then, would it be possible at the, at the PRVs to do that, the pressure reducing stations, would it be possible to put a meter in there, would that benefit anything?
We've done that in the past, we've had meters in there in the past.
Well, I mean, but does that kind of give us a zone type, or?
It wouldn't, you'd have to figure out which ones want to put it out, because the Williams, we have four, you know, Scott Bank, we have one, Grand, we have one, so they're pretty much close proximity, but you could probably put meters in there on the two-inch bypass, you know, and use that as your zone meter, and make sure you don't, not have leaks.
I just thought.
Look, so many of those loops loop around each other?
Yeah, they loop around, yeah, pretty much everything's looped in right now, so you're gonna get conflicting readings unless you actually sever them zones out.
Yeah.
If you don't sever them, not, but you're gonna have.
You count the same water twice.
You're gonna have this number, double this number, double this number, so you gotta be real careful how you make a zone.
And I understand that we have a loop, so that water is constantly moving in the winter.
Yes.
So we don't have a dead end and then have a freeze in it.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
How many feet of sewer line did you just saw, saw? You had two new areas where you ran some sewer line?
Yes, Lanes Avenue to Ponderosa.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we were having issues with the dusty boot, we were having to off salt with the spruce cabins, and about five or seven homes in that area were all formed out to the dusty boot, and they were having vacuum issues in their sewer lane, so we tried to live in what we could off of the dusty boot now, we took them down just on the south side of the dusty boot, tied into the six inch main that goes up to your top one, and then.
Was that six inch or eight inch?
Yes. Yeah, that was along Lanes to Ponderosa, and that severed another load, that took them off of Lanes, and off of the dusty boot, and put them down on another line, so it kind of spread out the, the water, so we weren't, so basically now the dusty boot is pretty solely on that six inch line that was along your property there, I mean, two, behind the spruce cabins, there's about, I think about four hundred feet of line, that's basically their main line now.
Yeah, and then the Escondere?
Yeah, that's about the, that we, that's.
Same, probably same.
Same problem, yes. Because we were having issues with people on Escondere Circle besides the dusty boot, the holes and Mayor Van Gogh's old house, they're on Escondere Circle, it's all so flat there, everything was bobbing back and then backing up, and, so we just severed everything, separated it out, and put them in different positions so the flow would go in different directions.
Anything else on reports?
Yes, police report. Two, this is a comment, really been a news story, Rick. Two Saturdays ago, I was going down to Almorgo, I left Cloud Rock about seven twenty, and as I pulled out on Agent Two's head down the hill, one of our cars passed and was heading down the hill at the same time, and that's a speed limit of thirty-five miles an hour down in Bailey Canyon. So when I pulled out behind the police car, I was about two hundred feet behind, and by the time I got Bailey Canyon, he was out of sight and gone. He was driving well over the speed limit, so I think it sets a very bad example when a police car exceeds a speed limit and doesn't obey the law like the rest of us have to. And you might wanna caution your people to.
Is that two Saturdays ago?
Unfortunately, two Saturdays ago, unfortunately, I could not get the license number, it was moving away too fast, the time was seven twenty when I left Cloud Rock. So, just caution, if the red lights inside are not on, they should obey the law. I see the sheriff's department doing that all the time, but I can't catch, you know, they're too fast.
All right, anything else on reports?
Jay, can I add some direct statements, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Just as an FYI, on Thursday, I had joint powers agreement meeting with Sheriff Black, Alamo PD, and two of our local PD. What this involves is it's our county white dispatch, um, right now, basically, Almorgo and county are footing most of the bill for dispatch, and now put in a system where they're gonna start recording and tracking those calls and break that percentage out, where they locate thumbcraft is eight percent of that total dispatch or whatever. That's the big thing in the meeting, the other part is our agreement with the county is also going to be discussed and adjusted, like what we talked about in the workshop, some of this stuff coming up, we're gonna have to do, it's a little bit different than what we have. And then the other one, real quick, Mr. Mitchell talked about speeding, I don't know if you can all follow Facebook or look at it, we have gotta get some signs put up in town. It's all over Facebook about what the actual speed limit is, well, it's twenty, and that's what I was posting. However, there's streets that don't have signs on them, people don't know what the speed limit is, the complaints are worse on the weekends, and we have the tourists, one of our streets, we had some vehicles stop, and we start having a little screaming, match between each other, we gotta get something done with these, with these signs. And it's a good time to look at it and see if we want to change speed limits, maybe slows or decreases. One of the big problems is slower. If you come off slower at twenty miles an hour, it looks like you're doing sixty, feels like you're doing fifty, so there's some, we may want to look at adjusting, but we've gotta get some signs up where we can know what the, what the speed limit is, because it's, everybody's opinions ever take from twenty to thirty-five, there's not a street in town that's safe to do thirty-five. When we look at those speeds, we need to remember, we gotta give them a very area in there, we gotta give them five or six over before we start a pronunciation, so when we adjust those speed limits, let's think about that area we're gonna give them before we start stopping on the right.
Can we put signs at the outskirts of the village stipulating?
We could, um, I believe the Angel Fire or Red River Line does that, and then several places, when you turn off of their side streets, they have a big sign that basically says twenty, I think theirs is twenty-five, but it says twenty-five miles per hour on all residential streets. Either way, the people know when they get into those areas, you gotta stay down.
At least coming out to the highway, have an occasional sign in there.
Now, going back to my days in this building, we had drivers, and I believe that when the driver tells if it's a residential street and it's not posted, it's twenty-five, I think that's part of the, I mean, people should know that.
And that's.
I mean, there's helpful, I realize that speed limits are self, you know, helpful suggestions, they're not the law.
Maybe, maybe you joined Almorgo in there, and you saw a lot of theirs is thirty-five.
Yeah, unless it's posted.
Right.
The county's saying it's not posted, and that's the law.
Right.
That is a question on the track or et cetera.
You know, and I think that's a good idea.
And you need to check, and we speak statute for sure, and see what, what power we have to do and how far we can adjust those. I do know there is a limit.
I was hoping the judges would be here, because that's one question I was gonna ask him tonight, is if we wanted to lower the speed limit just on Borough, and maybe paint it on there instead of hanging a sign, even if it's not a legal speed limit, is that legal to do? The police don't have to pull them over, they can pull them over and not write a ticket, but at least they're getting the notion of, hey, I need to slow down, because, I mean, people walk up and down there.
Village Orange already covers that, twenty miles an hour anywhere except otherwise posted, it's in the wood.
It's in the ordinance. That out of town is won't be that ordinance. So painting it on the street would be really good.
But if I painted it on the street, I'd want to go police fifteen. I've been in.
One other comment. Now, I lived in England for three years. There was no speed limit. Their speed limit was called safe and sane. If your vehicle was moving and you had a problem, it was your fault and you got a ticket. It didn't matter what the speed was or what the. Situation was if you had trouble like running off the road or a blown tire, you were driving too fast, you got a speed ticket. You might consider something like that.
We have on Samir, it's driving on mountain streets and mountain roads. It's kind of the same thing, it's whatever is safe. We use it a lot during the winter, like there's snow and ice.
Yes, a 35 mile or 20 mile an hour on an icy road is extremely dangerous. So a constant posted speed is not solving the problem.
Nobody lets people know about it.
I think the.
Most people want to follow the law, they just, if they don't know it.
Well, if you're posting it throughout the village, like you're saying, you know, you get one sign that says, I don't know, speed of 20 miles per hour in the village of Plowcroft, I believe it's posted. It's going to save you thousands of dollars, the signage we have to put up throughout the village every time because the signs get torn down. They should, I'm just putting up three or four signs, it would save you a thousand dollars.
We don't want a whole lot of signs here, huh?
No. But you got, you got to probably put up like five of them, you know, then take the, take the litigation of all the speed limit signs out of the equation.
And the biggest, the plane is right over there on that base. I mean, virtually on Chautauqua, 20, 25 is okay.
It's 20.
But.
It is posted.
Basically on this side, the 20 is probably 25.
All right.
I'm there, I'm going to pass out.
Yes. Oh.
So I had.
I was thinking you were later on now, I'm sorry.
I'm going to pass out just a sheet here of our current projects and the status of where we're at with them. We can talk, review that each one, or you can take them, review them, call me with questions, email me with questions, whatever the wishes of the governing body is. There was only one thing I did leave off, and that was the mayor and I had the meeting with the US Forest Service on purchase of the property that the wastewater treatment plant is on. So we have started that process. We had not received the grant. It should be, it should come along sometime after July, July, August, it could even be September or October. So this is just a brief listing of the projects that I'm working on right now, just the current assapire project, swallow road, the senior center, the cook shacks, hurdle restaurants, placement operation, the ball water station, the new ice cream facility, dog park. Road rehabilitation, these projects, which I understand now will be under the Jubal's direction. The Maple Blanca Vista Linnland's road project, and then rehab from Highway 82, that swallowed the school. So that's a brief report of our projects.
That is great. Thank you.
The next thing I'd like to cover briefly is our planning and zoning commission. We have fairly a brand-new commission. We have one veteran, that's Tom Blessin, he's our chair. All of the others are probably not even six months old. Two of them maybe six months, two of them one week. We have Tom Blessin as the chair, and then we have Tabitha Foster, Nathan Tompkins. And our two newest members are Mark Tatum and Jessica Beach. The chair and I are very excited, we think that there's, it appears that these members are very motivated. At our last meeting, we discussed a lot of things that we want to start looking at. I did provide them with the Cannabis Regulation Act, the marijuana bill coming out. They're going to be reviewing that bill, which is pretty fit, maybe some opinions.
It's only being deeper if you want to.
Yes, sir. And they're going to be going through it and tabbing the parts. Well, fortunately, Trustee Maynard was at that meeting and they're going to be going through there and tabbing the parts that have to do with signs, businesses, locations of distribution, how it affects some of our zoning, et cetera. And then we're going to be setting up a workshop and they'll do a preliminary, what they think some of the things that we should look at and condense it. And then we're hoping to have a workshop with the governing body and the planning and zoning together. I believe we have until July of 2022 before parts of it are.
I agree with you.
Right. All Subs, we had a project manager from an inventory firm, I suppose, contact us. The All Subs is going to be going under a major renovation, pretty much taking down what's there, they have a new building. I think it was, the plan showed seven gas pump stalls that have been accessed up of the highway. This is all conceptual planning at this point. We had a virtual meeting with the project, the project manager for All Subs discussing setbacks. It appears there may be an acquisition of the property to, the first lot directly to the east where the storage sheds are now, to incorporate the whole big area that they want to put the project on. So we were actively working on that. They requested some information. It'll be, when it gets closer, we have final plans, if you will. Or right when we get closer to what we think is, it's getting close to final, we'll present to you all, so you are, you're aware. Jubal, I'll meet with you about if there's any concerns on any of the utilities. And then I've already spoken to the fire chief, since there are gas tanks and pumps involved on that. The planning and zoning commission is actively still working on proposed revisions to the sign ordinance. We have a lot of issues that come up with signs and they have an idea, and the idea may be just to not asking you all to repeal and get rid of the current ones. But in their eyes, it's hard to take parts and try to revise it. So they're going to take all of this information that they've been discussing collectively and maybe just come up with a draft ordinance to present to you all to just get rid of the, there's a lot of repetition in the way we have now. So you can be looking forward to seeing a proposed draft of a sign or ordinance to come. They're also talking about residential zoning and what actually go on in residential zoning, signal badly dwellings, not businesses such as short-term rentals. So there's a lot of discussion, discussion going on with the planning and zoning commission. They're becoming very, very active and very, very involved and ready to clean up some of the stuff in the village that we've been dealing with and wanting to change. So that's ready.
Thank you very much.
Question.
Yes, sir.
Has there been any discussion on solar panels mounted on holes around the village? And what criteria does need to meet or whatever?
You know what? We have not. The only part of the code that I can recall right now is, is, is a height issue. Do you recall?
Yeah, as a specific topic, we haven't addressed that. I mean, it essentially falls under construction. So when you're building a house and you've got utilities and those sorts, it falls under that sort of purview, CID in terms of safe construction and how do I like the lines and all those sorts of things. You know, in terms of, it is, it is, I mean, you make a good point, it is freestanding something on pole. It's not, clearly not a sign. It's part of power generation for the house, so it's clearly the cause, I think that it's under construction. Height requirement, I think we would certainly look at it if somebody went up and was too tall, was taller, you know.
These 35 feet is the highest for.
A pretty big, yeah.
It's a pretty big solar panel.
Pretty tall.
Well, if I'm correct, if I recall correctly, anything even attached to the top of a building that can't be any taller than 35 feet in total? But I could.
Actually, I think it's actually the structure itself.
Okay.
Because it excludes things like chimneys and vents and those kinds of things. So the physical structure itself, the roof, the highest point of the roof or the highest point of the grid can't be more than 35 feet.
And what we can do is, and what the Planning and Zoning Commission and myself have done several times, is we will research and search through other municipalities, planning and zoning ordinances to see how they deal with with some of these issues. And same with the marijuana ordinance coming up. I know the New Mexico Municipal, New Mexico Municipal League website already has a link for sample Marijuana Regulation Act ordinance. There's nothing under there yet, but they're anticipating that municipalities will start drafting some of their ordinances to be.
And in general, most states have some direction or regulations about sustainable, sustainable energies, so radio harvesting and solar and those kinds of things. And some of them are safety-type related. And others are mandates that don't allow municipalities to restrict the development of those sustainable. So the first place we would have to look is the state. And then the state says, you may have, you know, this type of structure or solar panels or whatever. And, you know, other authorities are not allowed to restrict that. So I don't really think that is, I'm not, we certainly have to check there first because that's a lot of the ways states are encouraging renewals right or wrong because they have to, or allow some to change, so.
We'll add that list of topics to research.
An improvement.
Yes, sir.
Placement and operation of ball water station, estimate of the project $60?
I'm sorry, 60, that should be 60.
$60,000?
And that's for the, that's for the foundation and the building and housing station. This project is currently being, this is pending. Of course, the ball water station has been purchased, but the placement of the station and whether or not it needs to be enclosed and put on the foundation is something that the mayor and you are discussing.
So $60 is correct?
No, sir, it would be $60,000. So that, that would be for the, we're at the estimation of the project, and the project being the foundation and a building, the housing station should be at less than $60,000, which would qualify it to not have to go out to bid at rather formal quotes. Thank you, 60K is what that should be. Thank you.
Does anybody else have anything from Mr. Terry? All right, thank you very much.
Good report.
Thank you. Now we are moved on to new business discussion. Oh, I'm sorry. Do you need to have a motion? May I have a motion to accept the reports? Okay, Trustee Mitchell moved to accept the reports as presented. Do I have a second? I'm sorry. It's seconded by Trustee Maynard. Any further discussions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Now we'll move on to the next item. And this is discussion action. Okay, there is an opening on the library board. And we do have one individual who wants to come here and work and put his name in. There is, Ray Haller has got a letter that's in all of your books. That is my recommendation. He has done a lot for the community, is a good worker. I recommend that we put him on the board, but I'll open that for a motion either way. So I would make that motion. Personally, knowing Ray, I think he will be a fine actor to have a reward. And since he has subjected himself to that. Okay, we have a motion on the table by Trustee Smaga to accept Ray Haller on the library board. Do I have a second? I'll say. Seconded by Trustee Maynard. Any further discussion? Any counterbalance to the reasons? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Can't get out of it now, Ray. Yeah, he wouldn't speak up or he's stopped. Welcome aboard. Okay, the next thing on there. Approval for renewal of annual janitorial contract with GoPro LLC. They are a cleaning service that does the village offices. You do the library, correct?
No.
Okay, tell me what all you do.
I just do the village office, the public bathrooms, and a police station.
Okay.
And the maintenance shop.
And the maintenance.
And the maintenance shop. Is it, is that all public bathrooms, one?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and the contract has not changed anything from last year, correct?
No, just, it's sort of like, after I did the maintenance shop, they added that. I sterilized that and included a little bit of the inside contract. And I, and the trash cans from, what was that area?
The little canopy area with the fire pits?
Yes, exactly. I do that and then the outside, I just clean up the outside area as well.
So if I could verify, you're cleaning all public bathrooms daily?
Yes, sir.
I've included Z in the spot.
Yep.
Yeah, that's what.
Well, I have a, I will recommend that we renew the annual contract for GoPro LLC.
Are you happy with the service?
What's that?
Are you happy with the service?
I'm very happy with the service.
Okay.
If I could have a motion?
Okay, I'll move to accept the contract.
I have a motion by Trustee Mitchell to approve the renewal of the annual janitorial contract for GoPro. Now, seconded.
I'll say.
Seconded by Trustee Maynard. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, sir. The next one is approval for renewal of the annual janitorial contracts for Mountain Women Enterprises. And I'm going to let everybody know what you're cleaning.
I clean this building, the whole thing, upstairs and then take care of the fire stations. And the village council office.
And the village council office. Not the, not the offices, but the council chamber.
Now, I'll draw the art society, spends a lot of time in this building. Let me tell you, this building is a Macca. She really, or whoever does, a great job.
So you pick up after kindergarten, is what he's telling me.
I'll make a motion to renew the contract with Mountain Women Enterprises.
I have a motion on the table to renew the annual contract with Mountain Women Enterprises by Trustee Teeman. Do I have a second?
Yes, sir.
Seconded by Trustee Mitchell. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Got you in for another year. Okay, the next one is approval for annual renewal of annual license for the Plowcroft Art Society. Yes, sir.
We have two contracts.
Yes, one is for, it's one's for this building and one is for the fire station. For the fire station separate, right?
You voted on all of them because there's two contracts.
And I believe so, but I will take another motion if you'd like.
Make a motion to accept both contracts about women enterprises.
I have a motion to accept both contracts for Mountain Women Enterprises. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Better to do it twice than you have to come back and fix it up.
That's right.
Okay, back to Plowcroft Art Society. Okay, back to Cloudcroft Art Society. And the license there. Do you want to speak on that one, John, or?
It's the same contract Cloudcroft Art Society has had with the village for years. And we pay a percentage based on square footage of all utility bills for the building and provide our own liability insurance, so the village is not encumbered in any way. And this has been a great place for the society. And we appreciate it.
Would anybody like to make a motion on this one? And I would like to.
I'll make a motion to renew the license with the Cloudcroft Art Society.
Okay, I have a motion on the table by Trustee Maynard. Do I have a second?
I'll say.
I have a second by Trustee Mitchell. Any discussion? I would like to bring up, because of the art society, in the village chambers, we have these nice little art lamps all around the place. I need some paintings for them. Just, just throwing that out there.
Is that the price of the contract?
That could be a determining factor. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I will abstain.
Okay, motion passed with a.
One abstention.
With one abstention by Trustee Teeman for possible conflict of interest. And we will move on to proposed amendment to ordinance six dash one dash two, a speeding fines in the school zone. Do we have a representative from the judge?
Please give one more response.
Did we? You gotta throw something at me. Okay, I'm moving back.
Move back.
Discussion action, proposed amendment to ordinance five dash one dash nine, prohibited activities, vicious animals, and our presenter is Judge White. Ma'am?
I said, who's not here?
Who is not here? Do we have a representative of Judge White?
Danielle is also not here.
Okay, do we want to push this off to the next meeting?
Yes.
Because I don't have enough.
Yes, yes, I don't want this, the way it's working.
Okay, we have a, do I have a motion to, to, it's not table, it's on the same meeting. Postpone to the next meeting, that's it.
You're right.
Okay, do I have that motion?
So I'm moving on.
Okay, I have a motion by Trustee Mitchell to postpone this item until the next meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Teeman. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion postponed. Okay, the next one. Discussion item, proposed amendment of ordinance six dash one dash two, speeding fines in school zone.
I know you have some reason.
Okay, Chief.
Due to the high risk of the school zone with the kids being out in everything, well, the judge and I have noticed a lot of municipalities now, they have basically made that also not only a school zone, but it's a safety zone. So when it's a safety zone, any speeding fine within that designated zone becomes a double fine. If you notice the hill is that way, when you come up the hill, you stop on the hill, the fine's gonna be doubled. We think we could do it by state statute now, because they've extended that safety corridor all the way to the steer. But they told us we'd be better off if we did it ourselves by ordinance to where specifically varying schools on time only, that is a safety zone, and those speeding fines would be doubled.
Do you know what defines our current?
I have with me the eleven to sixteen over, and it's.
It's eighty-nine. So it's going to double as well.
Kevin, how many tickets have we written in the school zone in the last year? I mean, round numbers. Hundreds and dozens?
Probably at least a hundred.
You can skip to last year, since school is closed most of this year.
The bulk of our citations are generally school zone related citations. That didn't keep.
How many of them are repeat? How many are repeat offenders?
Not very many. And giving some credit to our locals, not many of them are local. We have a few that, okay, yeah, they get one, and we find most of the ones that we drive, we have people coming through, or construction companies that kind of come through. We get all kinds of excuses, well, we didn't see the line, or that's why those normal scripts are here. They kept saying they didn't see the line of signs, and we cheese out there. But most of the citations aren't doubled, they're figured out. Most of them are early. Like, what I mean early is when that school zone like first comes on. Once it starts getting congested there, then everybody tends to slow down, because you can't go fast and nobody else is. But they'll be early or late in that school zone. Well, that's the way how a lot of kids get in there. Because you have that group of kids, it's always gonna be early, because mom sends them out of the house early. You have the ones that are running to get there before the bell rings. Even with them, that school zone, that's too dangerous, time is, you know.
Yes, sir.
Can I make a suggestion? As a local who had the other day pulled out from here and turned left, and there's no flashing lights, you see it way far down. There's not enough, it'd get a really long school zone, and we have very few lights. You have one at each end, and then you have one in the middle. But I pulled out, and I was in the middle of the day, noonish, when that, in the middle of the day. And until I got to, I didn't realize it was a school zone. So I think it would be more effective, especially if you still have a repeat problem, you have more flashing lights and more signs.
We have asked state highway to come in and redo that entire school zone. Not only for what you're saying with the side streets, but we also have the issue of ours on the west end, it looks like a caution line. It doesn't look like a.
School zone.
School zone. So, but to do that, and they told us before they would look at it, but we're gonna lose about five parking places somewhere that are longer. The ideal place to put it, if you measure the length of the school zone, when they measure it, would be right between the Catholic Church and Magnus, where the gun shop is. We're actually overlinked on our school zone now, they let us away with it simply because of that overhead light. We get the same thing with people turning out of all sections even though it's there. If you turn out the parking lot instead of off the street, you don't even see, you don't even see that. But then they're doing is, okay, where do we put them where we're not, where we're not taking up your parking? We'd love to have them, but animalism is there. A lot of work, and we need to.
Can I ask a question? Is the objective to get people to slow down, or is it to increase revenue? If you're only doing a hundred tickets a year, that's why.
We wanted to slow down. Probably that hundred that we write, there's probably a hundred warnings. So the idea is to get them to slow down. That's why we sit there and blind site, mark you, right in front of the, you weren't, not worried about the high school, but you worry more about your elementary kids. So that's why we sit right there at that elementary school crosswalk, because we would rather you slow down than us get to stopping.
Okay, I would almost like to push this on until we hear from the judge, but I'm gonna leave that one up to y'all.
I'll make a motion to postpone and do what we can do with the judge.
Okay, now, any motion on the table? Sir?
I gave you numbers from this last year, I'm really easy with spelling. Again, it's gonna be skewed because of COVID.
Right.
That wouldn't get close.
Okay, I think it is a good idea, and I think the signage is a good idea.
Kevin, along with that, I'd be looking for a repeat offender. You know, if you're, to me, my first question here was, do we have a problem? We have a hundred, that's a problem. If we have a repeat of a high percentage of those, that's a different problem. My issue is if you go twenty miles an hour, you're getting like a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar ticket, and twenty's not very fast, and I've been guilty about doing that.
The, the theory more or less is that if they see the signs of those are doubled, you're going to slow down, you're gonna think, okay, that is doubled.
Doesn't cost me anything.
The one that we put out, and that raises it up to ten dollars administration fees from five. And this one, once we do this, it will put it into play, correct, Jeff?
That's correct.
Okay.
It becomes a play to five, it's a.
And the purpose of this was to help pay for the cost of running an MVD in our office?
Yes, we're doing a lot of, a lot of work in our office that is going to sample it, with a little bit of it coming back. But that five-dollar administration fee, administrative fee, actually stays in our office. And what we looked at, just to kind of give you a reminder of why we did this, when we looked at other places, if we go to the BMB Express or MBD Express, it's like thirty-five dollars walk through the door. You know, and you can go to Alamo, I believe, on board was still free, maybe, but you're gonna wait there for three hours before you get any good dollars.
You, you know, I have my driver's, FYI, my driver's license replaced because of my age.
Every year.
Let me, let me tell you, yeah, I quite, yeah. It was, you know, they have a waiting list, just like a restaurant, we have so much traffic for MVD. I mean, that's how popular it is. And the majority of them are people coming from the basement, they say, oh, we've heard it's easy. And it is, the girls are very efficient, the ladies in there. And it is a much more pleasant experience, you don't have to pull a number, but you do have to get on the queue and do this.
Yes, but we do have, our new MVD lady in there is, I mean, we got the hours open a lot longer than we've had in several years, right?
Yeah, she's open from eight until four.
And busy the whole time.
I just want to come in, and they do a fantastic job.
One comment?
Yes, sir.
Over seventy-five. Every year we renew, whereas others are under four years, same thing, S H discrimination. We pay four times what everybody else would pay.
Living that, way it goes. I'm good for eight years, no problem, I vote yes.
You could have put in a senior clause on that one.
Yes.
That may be, that may be something.
There's been postponed, no, I haven't.
No, this, they tried to go. This is why you should have brought up last meeting.
I tried to, and I got overspoke.
That's how we treat our senior.
This is one of those things.
That's right. Fair enough.
Fair enough.
I haven't even got a motion yet.
I've got a motion for you.
That's a fire roll call.
I still need a motion.
So we made that motion to adopt ordinance three ninety.
Okay, we have a motion on the table to adopt ordinance three ninety, amendment chapter six, one dash six dash three D. Do I have a second?
I'll say.
Okay, that's motion by Trustee Smaga, seconded by Trustee Maynard. And this, any further discussion?
I have a favor on this.
This will be a roll call vote. Trustee Smaga, aye. Trustee Teeman, aye. Trustee Maynard?
Aye.
Trustee Mitchell?
Nay.
What an abstention. Trustee Denny, aye. So motion passes with a, let's do my math here, four to one, roll call vote.
Also, we suggest you authorize the publication by votes by title and subject matter.
Okay, I need another motion for that one. Does that one have to be roll call?
No.
Okay.
That, I would make that motion, publish by title and subject matter.
Okay, I have a motion on the table by Trustee Smaga to help to instruct our lawyers to publish this by title and subject matter. Do I have a second?
I'll make a second.
I have a second by Trustee Maynard. Any further discussion?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Please, just for my clarification, I just was reading on ordinance, BMB administrative fees, the village with treasure, shell costs to be collected, and the B, from each person requesting a service in connection with every transaction. So does that mean if a senior comes in to get a parking placard that is free, do they pay the ten dollars? It says requesting a service in connection with every transaction. So is that ten dollars on every transaction, or ten dollars on every service?
Does that require automating to sound fake for that placard? Or does it go through the system?
Yes, because there's no charge for it.
There's no charge by the state?
Correct. The parking placards and the driver's licenses are any cards for anyone over the age of seventy-nine, is what the MVD does not require a charge for. We have, however, whenever we go to issue that driver's license, for example, we do tell them, you know, now that you're on a yearly renewal, there is no charge for you for the license. However, we are requiring the five-dollar village fee, so they give us the five dollars. So I just, I just, I just don't want that to be a challenge in our business in connection with a transaction.
I think we would have to do it the exact same way that we've been doing it.
Is that what I'm doing? I'm more than seven than I am.
If, would our eighty-year-old individual be exempt from? But you would still have the transaction.
He would have the, now, he'd have the ten-dollar village fee, but there would be no fee for the driver's license itself.
So, yeah, there would be the, we would continue it the way we're doing it now, except it'd be ten dollars instead of five.
Yeah, and for Barbara reviewed the contract that we have with the state and with the MVD, and it says for every time, like every, what'd you say, not transaction, every service. Because this is a service in connection with a transaction, you can charge, is the way this reads. I just wanted to make sure that it was the intention of the village. That's what was related to us from the contract with the MVD from the state, is that anytime anyone comes and we do anything for them, whether it be, those are only three that don't, there's three that don't have a fee associated with, through the MVD. And it's the driver's license or ID over seventy-nine, handicap placards, and by the way, actually mint inspections. If someone comes in just handing them an inspection, which is a ship off to a dealer. Those are the three things that we don't charge for. However, we're instructed per the contract with the state to still charge that ten dollars as the village fee.
Do we have an issue with that, Jeff?
No, I mean, it's a transaction. If you're doing anything input into a computer and it goes to the MBD.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure.
Okay. Thank you, thank you. Should I wait for Trustee Maynard, or do we go ahead and vote? This will be the vote, we've got a motion and a second to instruct the lawyer to publish. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Two votes for aye, one abstention, two abstentions.
You are the deciding vote?
No, an abstain is not against, so two positives passes that over.
Who was the second man abstaining?
Jim's not in here.
But he was the one that seconded to.
Yes, he did, but he did not vote. So that's the same as an abstention, which.
So then who would be the second now?
He didn't know it's this abstention.
No, he seconded, he was here and he seconded, he just did not vote.
Okay.
That's two totally different things.
I just want to make sure, because I have to do that.
Yes. That's the reason I'm calling on the amnesty.
Thank you.
If anybody was wondering about that.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're going to move up to the next item. Okay, discussion is destruction of the records per New Mexico Municipal Record retention schedule of 2021 dot zero zero three. And, does anybody know which record we are looking at on these?
There's a list.
There is a list up there.
There's a list.
So it looks like closed citations from 2013 through 2018. And counts receivable judicial. Judicial monthly reports, August two thousand seventeen through July twenty eighteen. Automation refunds, twenty twelve to twenty seventeen.
Okay, do I have a motion to destroy records per New Mexico municipal record retention schedule?
Also.
Okay, we have a motion by trustee Mitchell. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Teeman. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, approval of resolution twenty twenty-one point one zero, the fourth quarter budget adjustments. Sheila, this is your call.
So we work with our budget on the monthly when I reconcile the accounts. And Barbara is just trying to be proactive before the end of this fiscal year and get our budget in alignment. And so she's got a resolution in there where she's listed an increase to budget revenues to increase, looks like other licenses and permits, library donations, because we've exceeded what we actually initially budgeted, book sales for library. And then she's put a note, non-ex to everything. She's also applied to increase budget expenditures, and she's noted the reasons for that with each fund and GL. So like, we're asking to increase the EMS fund, and the GL is equipment maintenance, five hundred and sixty. And she says that it was not entered correctly in the state reporting system. So you can just kind of follow that down, rather than have me read it to you. If you have any questions, I'll try.
Can I ask a question on MVD build office? So we have twenty-five thousand increase in receivables, but then we're expensing it back out as expenditures?
Well, the way, the way this works is that when we collect money for a MVD transaction, this is not the ten dollar, you know, fee to do business with our office, then it goes into a separate account, and then the state sweeps it every night. So it's a cash in and it's swept out.
So what represents is we've done more MVD work than anticipated in our budget?
Yes, sir.
And then that money, we collect it and it goes to the state?
Yes.
Okay, that, that also helps with our vote earlier, it's popular. You know, we're doing a great service at a fair price.
On the transfers, we've got some money still in there in our tree project thing. It says we need to establish a budget transfer. The transfer from fund to fund. From emergency reserves to capital outlay, so that's just paperwork.
Yeah, this is just basically paperwork. We had a checking account that's been open, and all it's doing is sitting there and earning a little bit of interest, less than five dollars interest every month.
Is it, is this the residual of a project where people had to bid by the acre to thin trees in the village?
Yes, that is the leftover money that.
Yeah, we just couldn't pay enough to really have it done. So it's, it's gonna be moved into the general fund?
It's going to be moved into the emergency reserve.
Okay. I believe it's been sitting there for, what, seven or eight years? Unmoved, except for a little bit of interest.
Right. Did I have anybody a few years back rename, it was called the tree funding fund, and they renamed it capital projects fund in case you all, it was been several years ago, in case the governing body wanted to just have a separate fund for a certain capital or project that they wanted to fund. But it's just been seven. So that requires, you know, a budget transfer.
And this is just five thousand forty-two dollars, right?
Okay.
Back up just a little bit, under infrastructure, what is it, we're increasing it by ten thousand dollars from sixty to seventy, is this because what we paid state by to clean that well out there?
Yes, I'm pretty sure that's where they're taking that money from.
We saw we've been checking like sixty-seven hundred or something on you. So we're taking that from the general fund, we'll put it into infrastructure, is that what we're doing?
Uh, let's see. So it looks like we're, we're asking to increase that line item. And you know, we've got the beginning balance that rolls over every year, so it's basically like savings for that fund, so no, it's not coming from the general fund.
So just representing the money that we're rolling over?
Yes, yes.
So maybe, but we got a pay state by, so maybe that's why they're recognizing. Okay. Thank you. Anything else in there?
Okay, I'll stand for the motion. Motion to accept resolution number twenty twenty-one point one zero. Okay, I have a motion on the table to approve the, what do we got here? Approve the resolution twenty twenty-one point one zero, the fourth quarter budget adjustment, got a second.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Teeman. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So, okay. Trustee Smaga?
Aye.
Trustee Teeman?
Aye.
Trustee Maynard?
Aye.
Trustee Mitchell?
Aye.
And aye? It is a unanimous roll call vote? And motion carries. Okay, the next one is the USDA grant slash loan for the mountain top water sewer lines project with Ms. Turri. Do you want to go over that or you want me to?
Uh, I, I don't mind, ma'am. Uh, so this has been a topic that we've discussed several times. And I, Barbara and I, the mayor, were having a brief discussion one day about this USDA application. And during our conversation, I had brought up the word loan because, let me, let me, I need to go back to years, twenty seventeen. In twenty seventeen, we, the village applied for a colonial infrastructure project loan grant to do the mountain top water sewer line lead abatement project. We were awarded three hundred and sixty thousand, four hundred and twenty-seven dollars. With that money, the scope of work was to plan, design, construct water sewer line lead abatement lines in the mountain top area. That three hundred and sixty thousand plus ended up going all to final design. That's how much the final design for that area up there to go to construction cost. So that's how this started. So then the conversation came up, well, how are we gonna fund this project? It was on the ICIP for a while, nothing became of it. And in twenty eighteen, resolution number twenty eighteen dash eighteen, a resolution by the governing body was authorized for, to submit an application for funding and financing of the, of the, of the project. And that was in twenty eighteen. That was to authorizing the submission of a completed application to USDA. In order to apply for that money, and you had to have the PER, the preliminary engineering report done for that area. And that report, what comes out of that report is they assess the distribution system, community engagement, the financial status of the village, the need for the project, and they, and they have to evaluate and come up with three alternatives how to mitigate the problem, if you will. So in twenty seventeen, final design. Twenty eighteen, resolution authorizing the application for, to fund and finance. In twenty twenty, the PER, which was the first piece of paperwork needed to submit the USDA application, which would be reimbursed once we got, once if, if and when we got the funding. So the conversation that, I believe that we're getting maybe ready for budget, the, the conversation that the mayor and Barbara and I had was the engineer that's doing the PER had emailed me and said, and asked, reminding me that USDA funding provides financing all loans you have together in with the current financing of the project. That conversation led to mayor, mayor Denny not recalling that a loan was ever part of the funding. So with that, we are ninety percent done with the PER. The PER, we had budgeted seventy-five thousand either last year or the year before, I can't remember, Sheila. The PER costs sixty-seven thousand dollars, which was a necessary component to apply for funding. So that's almost done, but the reason it's not done completely is they were asking, do we need to, how many, what do you want to incorporate into this application with USDA? USDA, it would be a loan grant component, but the grant component isn't determined until they take all of the village's financial information together, all the outstanding debt and the cost of the project. Then they determine what part, what percentage is grant, what percentage is grant, and then what the loan would be. The loan would be repaid over a period of forty years. The payments would be with a two point three point seven five percent interest rate. The precise payment amount is based on the interest rate when the loan is posed, blah, blah, blah. I reached out to the engineer and I said, okay, so if the governing body decides to rescind the, the resolution and not apply for the monies, is the PER still good? And she said, yes, the preliminary engineering, engineering report is still good for up to five years once it's approved by the Mexico Environment Department. And it could be used to apply for other funding or loans as well. So that's where we're at with that. The mayor wanted, he wanted, I believe, I'll let the mayor speak, but I believe he wanted to make sure that the governing body understood there was a loan component to this USDA grant application. And we've, we've discussed it several, several times, so.
And we won't know the percentages until we make the application?
Well, that, that would depend on if, well, yes, yes, but a big, a big factor is they, how much, how many, how much of your outstanding debt would you want to be included into the loan part of the funding? You know, to combine all your payments into one, if that's what you want to do. So that's, that's what they were, they were asking is, do you want to include your outstanding debt? And that's what sparked the conversation of, oh, I didn't realize this was, had a loan component.
Is it elected whether we include our outstanding debt or is it required?
It's not required.
Okay, the outstanding debt that we have, is it less than one percent on most of it, correct interest? There's some zero percent loans, there's some one percent loans. I think there's one small loan, the one that's closest to being paid off was at three percent.
Sure.
All the rest of them are lower percentage.
But that's why you wouldn't want that.
Right.
The cost of this job was how many million?
In twenty, uh, in twenty, twenty, twenty eighteen, it was two point four million.
So we're taking out a loan for two point four million?
Well, well, we don't know how much that is.
Yeah, we have no idea.
Can we make the application?
We've already spent.
Three sixty.
Plus another sixty-seven on it. But what I was looking at is, and we're, we're getting ready to take out a loan for two point four million.
Possibly.
Well, not for the full two point four.
Right, because we don't know what.
We don't know what the percentage is.
They're gonna look at our debt and then determine what they'll grant us, and then how much they.
We would have to review the terms of that.
Sure.
This wouldn't mean we have to take, the management's proceed. If there's, you've already got four hundred and thirty thousand or something expended, you might as well go ahead and see where it leads.
Exactly.
If not, we wasted this money?
We, I agree.
Thirty-five years on the preliminary engineers report.
So, right, so we started out in twenty seventeen getting that money, thinking, thinking that that money would fund the project. When they got up there, and I, I, I think some of you have seen the plans, it looks like, it looks like a spider web, I mean, it's, Google has seen it, I mean, you know, it's lines underneath each other's houses, and it's just, it looks like a tangled ball of just knots.
You know, Google, help me, I remember, you know, there was a large amount of lead, lead packed pipe and stuff?
Yes.
That's.
Yes, that, that one section, the chrome's the other section.
That's, that to me, let it, let it, but if we can get it funded, that, that to me is a hyperhardy. And that's a, the older the lines have more lead. Older lines will be where if we have systemic leaking from core joints or moving ground.
You've got that joint up there, you've got old gallon pipe, you've got iron pipe, everything coming in for water, for water lines.
You know, this is, to me, follows right in with our paving discussion. We have some things, we've inherited, this might, I don't know if that's a hundred-year-old piping or sixty-year, eighty for sure, but it's, we've inherited this, this has always been known. And we just keep on throwing stuff, well, we'll do it later, later, later.
I think it's a complexity problem of that project up there. When they put the water sewer lines in there, when the army camp came in, they put them in to the CC core. Then when the army camp left, they started building, making tents, and they built cabins out of tents. But when they put the tents in there, they're on top of the water, the sewer lines, then they eventually came home, and then you're stuck in a house on top of your infrastructure.
And again, an inherited situation that is not gonna get better. It's a, we've got a huge water question in our village. Lead, lead abatement should be cured whenever we can afford to. This is a mechanism to do those things. Whether it helps us on our water, we won't know until we do it, it might. It's a, it's a good probability that the older parts of town have more trouble than, than others. The, to get it out from other people's houses, that's gotta make sense. And we may be trading off credit ability to where we can't go borrow two or three million to pay it. And there is a ceiling every, every.
You're discussing the water, the purchase of that.
What's this, purchasing land for water? The part that I was, I was actually shocked about is when I said in all these meetings, it was a fully funded project. That's the reason we took it off of the ICIP. Then all of a sudden, it comes in, and that's not what I was, that's not the way I understood when we talked in the office.
You weren't present when the resolution was passed.
The, the time that, when we were in the office, the loans, loans, we weren't applying to take out the loan to see how much they would cover. It was, we were taking out a loan for two point four million dollars. And if they wanted to throw in a grant later, it would be up to them, and we would have it out of sale. That's the way that it was explained to me.
Well, it.
And that's, that's why I was putting it back in front of the.
So the, the resolution read to submit an application for funding and financing of a water and wastewater improvement for the mountain top area. So I guess the funding and financing is a matter of interpretation.
It doesn't say grant, can it?
It just says funding and financing.
Yeah, the part that was the, that I misunderstood was the fully funded. I take fully funded as fully funded, not as a loan.
Well, it could be fully funded through a loan, I mean, it's a.
But that's the argument.
Make sure that I know.
I just want to make sure that we're not saddled with.
The purpose of it is, we're just making application, we don't have to accept it.
Exactly. Exactly. I don't know.
Is that correct, Jenny?
Well, it can always be, if it comes to the point, before you sign it, if you can't afford it, you can't afford it. And you don't sign it.
And it's going, and it's reasonable to assume it's gonna be more than two-point-four now because everything has gone way up since two thousand and eighteen. But if it, if it comes up and then it's, it's not a term we can handle, can we put that back on the, on the deal with the legislature? Because we could show that we've got this need, I mean, lead abeyments are all hyperbolic, should be big, big water line should be an issue.
The engineer said, the good thing about the project is, is that it would be shovel-ready with design being complete for the future. And I, you know, I guess you have to be careful of what, what, I mean, what word do you use? Funding, financing? There's hardly any grants out there anymore, they're all a loan grant component or grant cash match component. I don't think we
So who, who was it told you we wouldn't know the percentages until it was submitted?
That's the, that's the, the engineer in front of us doing the preliminary engineering report that completes the USDA application because it's, it's, it's fairly large.
And we've already paid their most of their money, they're almost through.
So, of the, correct, of the sixty-seven thousand dollars, which was approved back in twenty
Well, you will see it and then when
That's my, that's my opinion, we're gonna see it.
You can, you can have them finish the report.
I thought they were finishing the report.
They've finished, okay, the, the, the report's not completely finished, but one of the questions they needed to finish it was, do you want, would you want to incorporate any of your existing debt into this application?
I don't want to. Not especially if we've got low interest on the
Yeah, I think we're leaving their interest rates, obviously there's a bench for that. And then if, if the, when it comes back into us, if we can include it in the ICIP.
Well, we took it off the ICIP last year.
Because, because we got the
We thought we had a grant. Correct.
And we may have a grant. We don't know, we don't, it was gonna say grant.
Yeah, I mean, we've gotta let them finish it, we've gotta, you know. The question is, do we want to incorporate any of our debt, I think.
Yeah, I don't think incorporating the debt makes any sense.
You can refinance part of it, you don't have to do it all, you can do any, any
Any portion.
You don't have to
You can refinance at lower interest rates.
Yeah, you see with, and with a shovel-ready set of plans, you don't have to build it all, you get the bids all that come in, what do you want? You start maybe prioritizing, looking at what else we have to, have to have money. You know, water, whether we're buying land for water, whether we're fixing pipes for water, getting lead out of the water, all, all that's the same thing, it's all super expensive. Acquiring land and getting more water is great, but now if we just keep on, if we have a leak, if we just keep on flooding down the leak, I think the first thing they're gonna ask us on that question, have you fixed your problems in your village? And that's one thing, do you, do you need it? Yes, why? Because we're losing water, we don't know where it goes. That's not a very good argument. If we say, look, we, we do, we're doing everything, whether it's the audit that we're pursuing or projects like this, and we go out there and say, we're tackling every one of these as much as we can with our money. That's why we're running out of money beneath this land, beneath this water. And there's a, maybe we're missing, maybe we're missing, okay? It won't get better if you don't start selling. To just buy water to, to push into a system, we don't know what problems are there. To me, that's, it fixes it, it makes all feel good, and then do the, do the two million or three million, because now we have more water. So I don't think it's either or, I think we need all these things.
I agree.
You know, how we're gonna plan them all. But if this one's ready for us to see what can we do and what does it cost? And just don't include cheap debt.
Do we need a motion on that?
Well, I think it's
It's action, yes.
I mean, it's, I don't think we need it because we're already moving on it.
Well
I just wanted to make sure that we are not taking out a loan without, knowing how much we're taking out a loan for. I don't want to take out a loan for two-and-a-half million dollars that we thought was a grant.
We have a long, hard line to deal with.
So I understand Jenny needs to be able to tell the engineer, do you want to incorporate any of your
Most of the debt.
And that's really the only question.
And proceed with application to see what
Is there a new fee for the application?
I'm sorry?
Is there a new fee gonna be charged to us when they make the application for us or is that something that you
No, 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 it's, it's part of what Stan Tech would do. But do we want to keep the PER and wait for additional funding? Do you want to apply for funding just for the project? And incorporate, and not incorporate any debt, we just need to make sure that we all
So we could just let them finish their reports, say, no, don't include any more of our debt. And then, then we got the packet ready for submission at any time.
I agree with that. I just don't want to submit it and get a loan without, especially, you know, I had no idea that this was a loan. I wanted to make sure that all of y'all were on the same page as whatever it is.
Loan grant, it, it won't be a loan, it's a loan grant.
Even though they say grant anywhere?
You wouldn't need to use the word funding if, if funding wasn't different than the financing, otherwise you'd just say financing.
Okay. If it was all loan, then it would be financing.
Right, so the, so there, the, the format they gave us and the resolution that was approved said, application for funding and financing. Funding to me is the grant component, financing
That's where we're at.
Otherwise, it's, it's, it certainly doesn't mean anything.
Okay.
Okay.
Make a motion. I'll make the motion that we proceed with the preliminary engineer's report, not including any other debt. And do the application for funding and financing.
And then, and then bring the what USDA will have offer us back to this people?
Yes.
Before final
We're not approving the, we're approving the process of the files, we want to, then we can see what they have.
And if, I mean, I, USDA may take a while, if you all want to put this project back on your ICIP, you so can. I mean, you create your own ICIP, it doesn't matter who you submitted it to, I mean, you can do whatever you want to.
And you may have, the, the motions that night.
Yes, as far as I know, you're still going.
No, no, you still have a day. Okay, so trustee man makes a motion that we move forward with the engineering and the application?
Yes.
On this, without taking any additional debt, any of our additional loans in account? And bringing it back to the table before any loan is applied for. Do I have a second? Is that correct?
Before you move is, is
Yes.
Accepted. You gotta apply
For any commitment. Before any commitment.
That's correct.
Okay. Do we say? Okay, trustee Smanga seconds that. Any further discussion?
Yes. What we may end up seeing, as, as this goes through this process, that's correct, we've got these other two major priorities, which is our preparing our streets, there, there, they've got a couple of them on our project list, so it's always gonna be studied. And then the acquisition of additional water is on our, our ICIP. So those are like our three biggest things, you know? Water is two out of three. And without water, doesn't matter how rough the streets are. But, but with water, we sure need some attention to our streets. And so, and we're doing that in the list of projects Jenny showed us, so.
Well, and later this year, usually around October, is when the ICIP presentation will be made to the legislature and to keep that bar real on there, and you can make it a top priority. And then you may be able to get a portion of money towards the larger part of the
Right, I mean, we can readjust our infrastructure capital project up, you know, up there.
Which I think is on your agenda, so remind you to work on it.
Right. Okay, yes, one more question. Jenny, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Next one to fund. And Jeff's gonna be highly involved in this. Okay, this one is for the forgiveness of ten percent interest rate for late fees on utility bills dating back to the auditor's twelve-nine-twenty-nineteen interpretation of ordinance seven dash one A dash two C, resulting in audit, audit findings with fiscal year eighteen-nineteen and repeat findings in fiscal year nineteen-twenty. And you wanna go on that one or do, need some more background?
I thought you were simple. The, the auditor compelled you to start interpreting something that you had no intention of doing in the first place. So all you're doing by this action would be to reverse, to make, to clarify what your intention was, tell the auditor.
Thanks for bringing it to our attention. Here's what we did.
Yeah. Well, we, thanks, I can say anywhere.
Okay, how do we, how do we address people who paid this money? Because during the same time periods, some people were later
You're gonna get a credit on your bill if, if it ends up, if it's positive, they get a credit.
Shayla, did you find anything that was in that? Or did you look? As far as people who incurred that compounding interest on the ten percent that paid it?
That paid it?
Yes.
Though, the thing that Barbara had me get together, and I have a list here on my first, we want an hour for the next discussion, it's just a list of our customers, it's a list of like nine of them, they're the major ones that we have with issues with those things.
How many, how many are?
Right off the top of my head, I don't know without having my computer. The, this, the sample list that I have right here, it's just nine accounts.
Nine, nine accounts.
Nine accounts of just a few samples of people who have, since we've made this change, we had one individual who is, who got kind of behind and upside down on her bill. And right now, the total on her account is six thousand, six hundred and four dollars and fifty-one cents. After I went in and looked at that, just the portion of just late fees out of that is four thousand, six hundred and fifty-six dollars and forty-six cents. So
The question, the question to you was, you don't know whether or not anybody has already paid those
There's multiple people who have already paid.
Okay.
That's potentially everyone in the water system.
You can go back and recalculate if they've overpaid, you can look at it.
I'd have to go into every account, we'd have to do that, but it's, it's something you can't do.
Shayla, in our accounts receivable for the water department, didn't we have like a hundred and fifty thousand or so that's past due? I think in our budget, we went over that.
Yes, it was something, I don't remember what the number was, but it was very high.
Something.
That's hard to walk on, it's looking, is that, is that portion of that is the, the largest portion of the income, right?
A serious question.
Yes.
Anybody get a lien on their property as a result of not paying this debt?
I've got one that I'm looking at right now, she ran me a report the other day. And it's not really for the meeting, it was just one I was going over. And when, and it was a rental property, I don't want to throw out any names here, but it was a rental property, the renters left. They left an outstanding bill, well, we'll just look at one of them, that was about three hundred and ninety dollars. And that's when it was disconnected with somebody else's name.
Yeah.
And it wasn't that much, it was, let's see, three hundred and seventeen dollars. By the time that interest came in there, because of the compounding interest, one thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars, this is after everything else has been cut off. This is just interest on late fees. It's only for a year and a half. And we were selling water at that same location under a different renter.
And collecting.
And collecting. But because these, this one kept going up, yes, a lien got put on
So it's not on the person, it's on the property.
It's on the property. That's one of the things we want to address in our ordinance.
Yeah, is, in our ordinance from me and Barbara and the other groups, unless we have something written from the property owner stating that the property owner is not responsible for the renters' water usage and outstanding bills, then we have grounds to go after that whole property owner, even though it was the renter who used it.
That's what the state statute allows.
Right. And, and in our, in our own rental property, that, that's why we pay all our water bills and then we build our town. Because we never want something building up against a property we don't know about. I mean, that's a homeowner, a property owner, should understand all and not let things be built up against that property.
This is true, but we shouldn't have reconnected that service with that debt on it.
Yeah.
No matter whose name's on it.
That's right.
And that's something that we did.
Well, is the question of compounding, like we're charging ten percent a month on the unpaid balance, that's water usage plus interest accrued, is that an illegal act?
Yes.
That's what they're complaining about.
That's what
Not necessarily. That's what they're Not necessarily. It depends on, the whole, the whole deal with, you're, you're a self-regulated utility, okay? The PRC, the Attorney General, the auditor, they don't have, they don't regulate how you operate your utility. There is, it has to be reasonable. And that's, that's, that's case law out of Hobbs, it's been fifty years ago or more, maybe less, I don't know. Anyway, it just has to be reasonable, so it's not illegal per se. It, it has to be looked at from the standpoint of, is it reasonable?
Honor, property taxes at the county, they charge one percent a month past due on your property, up to, so it's twelve percent here. But I don't remember, I don't know if you know or not, is that one percent added to the bill and that's one percent of that the next month and so on, or they come down?
I have no idea.
Yeah. I don't remember.
I, I have one more question for you. Legal? Is it legal for the village to charge a fee for services that they do not deliver? Is it legal? Like a homeowners association or something like that, that you don't deliver a service but you charge anyway?
Statutorily, you provide a service and it can be an assessment, whether or not, whether or not it's used or not, if it's available. The way, the way you do it, once, once something, once property is hooked up to water or sewer, you can, you can continue to assess that because it's giving value to that property, having that sewer line there. So, yes, you can literally, it, it appears as though you're charging for, for, you're not providing anything, but you are providing something.
So the utility company, the electric, when they disconnect your electricity, they can keep charging you for the pole that's outside and the lines that come by your house?
Depends on what Public Utilities Commission has allowed them to do, if it's a part of their tariff, yes. It, it
Not so that, okay. Let me repeat this.
Okay.
You are a self-regulated utility. You don't have somebody in San Faye telling you how, what your tariff is. The only constraint that you have, as far as I'm aware of, is this case, out of case law out of Hobbs, it says it has to be reasonable.
Reasonable?
Yes.
So a ten percent
And the, the statutes specifically allow you to charge an assessment against property that has been served with water or sewer.
So the ten percent that surcharge we're adding is, is ten times what Al Gore charged you?
What was it?
It's not reasonable. It's not reasonable?
And that wasn't being ten in the first one.
The, the two, I, I say two things on the, there on the, before we decide this. One thing we could do, say from today forward, we don't do this. All right, and that's where you just correct any interpretation. If we don't know how many people paid the ten percent, then we might have to refund. If it, what if it's a hundred thousand dollars? If it, what if it's a hundred thousand dollars? Do we know how much, how much we're obligating ourselves for? The act of saying this isn't working is easy. To, to re, re, uh, re, remedy, re, re, how do you say the word, remedial, remedial actions are either, you quit doing it from today forward, you can forgive back to a certain point, but you need to know, how big is that check? And then, what's, if you go back to a certain date forgiving, and before that, people pay 10%, what keeps them from coming and say, look, you got a new?
If you're not comfortable taking that position now, they can do the work, do it. Uh, the next agenda item is, is amending this to make it clear that it's not prospective.
Exactly, from today forward is easy.
If you, if you direct, if you directly publish this ordinance, this proposed ordinance for adoption at your July meeting, from that point forward, it's not a problem.
It's not.
And if you want, if you want some information about what, how much you have overcharged here, how mu, how much people have been overcharged, so to speak, then you could postpone and do that at a later date. The only, the only constraint at my cause is that if I've got the $6,000 bill, and I've got my property sold, and I gotta, I gotta either pay it up or not sell my property, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, you know, I'd like, I'd like it resolved as soon as possible.
Well, and again, we, like, on doubling our speeding fines, we said if you don't speed, it doesn't charge you anything. If you paid your water bill, it doesn't cost you anything. These people ran these bills up, if they're landlords who rent, they have income off their property, if they're not watching what their tenant is doing, that's just not, that's just sloppy ownership. So, to me, they, they wouldn't have owed all this money if they just paid the bill. Why should we let them, uh, I mean, what is this, ignorance of the law? Okay, they said that's no excuse. You know, everybody who pays their bill on time pays it, and they don't pay 10%. They're, they're good people, they're paying their bills. People that don't pay their bills, they had this exposure, it was in our, in our paperwork, right?
No, it was, it was the same way.
You were not, you were not doing this, Karen.
Right.
I understand, you were not doing this until the auditor told you you had to do it. So, it only goes back a couple of years.
Well, if we were doing it, these bills wouldn't be this big.
I'm sorry?
We were doing it, or these bills wouldn't be this big.
My understanding is, is that the compounding aspect of it?
Yeah.
Did not occur until the auditor told you, you, you had to do that a couple of years ago. So, I, I don't know how much, I mean, in my imagination, that's a fairly short timeframe. How many people didn't pay their water bill? You got nine accounts according, you know, she's got nine accounts, there may be some others, that's not a really big problem, to try to find out, to have them go back and look at it.
And, and maybe when they look at, at who did pay this, I mean, if this is a relatively small amount of money, they'll be able to refund, that's what, stopping it from here forward, I sure think that's reasonable. It, it wasn't, it wasn't the, it wouldn't be interpreted this way, but we were doing it. We were adding this money up, right Shayla?
Yeah, um, before the finding in 2019, it, well, we took it in the way that the auditor system going, because it was 10% on the most recent charges. Auditors went in and found that regular ordinance had to switch it to 10% of the total balance. So, since that changed in 2019, it went from just the most recent to the, to the full balance.
So, before that, we weren't doing it, so we don't have to go back there.
Not after.
Uh, 5/20, 2019, is when, is when it got changed. According to your report.
Two years, two years of this happening.
When we find something we're doing wrong, the quicker we correct it, the better, there's always a good rule.
Okay. Will this new ordinance correct it?
Yeah, 'cause it stops it.
Yeah.
Or clarifies it.
It clarifies it, it stops it.
This, uh...
So, it's only on that month's charge?
Just that month, and then it's carried forward.
But then, if they pay the next month, it's 10% on that?
No.
Okay, that's why I wanted.
It's 10% of the amount that was incurred that month.
Okay, well, if they don't pay the next month?
They don't get another 10%. They have normal interest if you've got, you got 1% interest or something in there? Do you have any interest at all? If, 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 if you've, if you haven't paid the bill, and you've charged the 10% penalty for late payment, and they don't pay it the following month?
They get another 10% of the balance.
Are you talking about what's going on in two, two years ago?
That's what gathers some trouble. See, the, the whole idea of, of late fees at any, any level is trying to encourage them to pay us, that's really what we always want, is the bill. We don't really want the interest. So, 10% of one time is pretty excessive.
Well, no, not really, not at all.
Look, I mean, I mean. There's no incentive to pay you late from then on, for sure.
Well, you can put, the way either way, payment charge, not just the 10%. The way, the way it's, is drafted in this proposed ordinance is this, if you owe $10, and you didn't pay it that month, you're gonna have an extra dollar.
Yeah.
So, now it's gonna be $11. If you pay the next margins, $10, okay? And you don't pay that, then you got another dollar for that month only.
Yes.
It doesn't accumulate.
It's not 10% on the interest?
Yeah.
Doesn't, 10% of each monthly?
Yes.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And, and that's.
And that's how this is?
Yeah.
Those are intentions.
Okay. Now, do you consider 10% to be reasonable?
Well, that's a, actually, that would be the next item on the table. The thing on the agenda that's right now that we are discussing is the fact that we overbill, and there's no other way to say that, by using compound interest for approximately two years. Now, it only happened to a few people.
Okay.
And we can do the research and find anybody else who'd happen. But, this is to correct our mistake.
So, that's why you're asking for forgiveness?
That is why I'm asked, I am asking for forgiveness for 10% interest late fees on utility bills back to the auditor's 20, or 12/9/2019.
Even the first month that they were late?
The first month is fine, because there's no compounding interest.
And, 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 I guess, if you call it supporting the utility billing department, the only reason it's changed is because the auditor has told us it needs to change.
That's what I'm saying.
So, it really, it wasn't like there that he thought we were doing something wrong.
No.
It was them saying, you did something wrong, you need to fix it, and we don't even know if it was wrong or not.
Back prior to this?
We weren't doing it that way.
We were charging 10%?
Of the most recent.
Of the most recent, of the most recent charges. That was before the financial requirement.
If you didn't pay your bill four months in a row, you're gonna have 10% on each month.
The girls only changed it because the auditor spoke to them.
So, you're saying if we didn't pay our bill every month for $10 for four months, it'd be $40?
Your real current rate?
And 10% would be on this one?
This means that we would give off of it?
If, if your bill was $10 and you didn't pay it the first month?
So, you owe the month?
You have a month.
Yeah.
Second month, you still have to pay it, another month.
Okay, so the bill would then end up being $44.
So, you have two months, you know?
Yeah, okay.
So, two months.
I like it up there. He's gonna get a 370, so I don't know. So, that makes your motion entirely more common.
Right. That's what they're talking about.
The next one, no, keep it good.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I don't, there's no way this can get into anti-donation, though. It's, this is forgiveness to correct a wrong.
Yeah, it's, bottom line is, is that you never start to pay out on them, if somebody's, you know, if you're a customer.
We're gonna go through, recalculate the bills based on the formula we could use, and then send it back.
If, if somebody happened to come in and had paid you $1,000 they didn't have to, then you, you know, you could give them a credit against future bills.
Okay.
So, you could do credit accounts, not, but would they, the girls need to issue the credit checks?
Credit accounts don't affect our budget.
Not necessarily, I mean, you could do, you could issue a refund check, you know, the simplest.
For extreme circumstances.
The simplest thing to do is go back and treat it like an account receivable, recat, recalculate it, see what they paid.
Give them credit.
If they covered it, you know, if they overpaid, they have a credit going to the next month.
You mean, you mean like the federal government does when you overpay your taxes? You get a credit. You don't give a check.
Yeah, so, do you wanna?
I'm sorry, but I meant that this could be for Shayla's, that, that, if you need to make an adjustment, you need supporting documentation, right?
Yes.
So, what would be the supporting documentation that the auditors would, would require for her to make an adjustment?
The action of the board?
From that day forward?
From 12/9/2019.
Yeah, I just wanna protect them, because.
Yeah, yeah, because we have to, there's a form that I fill out, Barbara has to approve and sign it before I even touch the account, after she reviews it, make sure that I did have the supporting documents, then I can go in and do it, and we keep it digitally in the file, and then the auditors will pull those out randomly, so I've gotta have that back in the notes.
And this, this, uh, this bill that we're talking about, this included trash and sewer and water?
Water, sewer.
I'd make, I'd make a motion.
You need to be very careful on your motions.
Yes.
That, the, the motion is, is to forgive the compounding.
Correct.
Period. I mean, if they didn't pay their bill, they should still pay it.
I think, I think that would be, we would make, make a motion to forgive any compounding of interest on utility bills from 12/9/2019 to present. Is that correct?
Yes.
Get your motion.
Can we stop there? Jeff, is that?
Yeah, I, I think that's all you need to do, is just, you know, that's what you're, that's what you're forgiving, is the compounding portion of the bill.
Okay, I have a motion on the table by trustee Maynor to forgive the compounding interest that was accidentally in place there by the auditors since, or from the time that the auditors made that founding until present. Is that correct?
And it's not just on ordinance five, or 7-1A-2C, it's also 7-1A-2D. I mean, if your sewer does the same thing.
Yes, the interest is on.
That's what I was saying, utility bills. Instead of just one.
Any compounding, any charge, sewer, water.
So, the, the motion was the forgiveness of the 10% compounding interest on utility bills dating back to the auditor's 12.9/2019 interpretation of the utility bills. Correct?
Yes.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Segmented by trustee Teeman. Any further discussion?
Yes. If you forgive the debt, then you can turn around and correct their accounts, because you've already forgiven the bill, they don't have to pay it.
Well, we, we're not.
So, now we need to be able to reimburse them for the overcharges they haven't paid. I know, but we're gonna, your, your motion says we're going to forgive.
The compounding.
So, we forgive the compounding.
Which meant they overpaid, so we just have their extra money.
And, is that the way it's gonna be interpreted?
Should be.
Okay.
You know, you're, you're, you're adjusting the bills, and you can treat whatever they paid as a credit.
Okay.
A prepayment.
Do we need to add that to the motion?
Wouldn't hurt.
Yeah, that'd just be a credit to them.
That, that anyone who had paid a compounded interest. It seems to be a long motion.
But, but the. I think we're covered.
That it, it appears it's a credit.
I think what happened naturally.
Should we need an amendment to this motion, in order to get that covered? Because we already had a motion and a second.
A motion and a second? It is up to you if you wanna do amendment, I don't think we need it.
Attorney, you would need it?
I don't think so, simply because what you're doing is, is, is retroactively giving them a credit for any overcharge that they have actually paid.
Okay.
Could we simply forgive a forgiveness?
When, when she sits, when, when she has to sit down and redo each month, treat, you treat each month as a new deal. If they didn't pay the second month, they're gonna have 10% of the amount of that bill. Now, when it all comes down, and, and they're gonna have, they're gonna be charging, they're gonna know what came in to pay it, if anything. If nothing came in, then they'll correct.
If, if someone owes us for three months plus the interest incurred, and they come in and give us one month payment, what makes it go to the, does it always go to the oldest debt?
First debt, first debt?
Well, it, for, did I stand first debt? What you're doing is adjusting the bill. That's, that's the bottom line, you're adjusting the bill by getting rid of the compounding. Period. Now, once that's done, the amount due will be juxtaposed by the amount that was paid. And if, if somebody owed $10 and they paid $100, then they ought to have a credit going forward to the next month for $90. Once that gets through, once, once you get from beginning to end of, if they still have a credit, they'll, they'll have a credit going forward through that.
Okay.
I'm happy.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor? Just making sure we don't have to have a roll call, which we do not.
No, it's just a motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, motion carry. Okay, the next one is proposed amended to, amendment to ordinance 7-1A-2C and 7-1A-2D clarifying the water and sewer penalty rates charged on delinquent accounts, removal of late fee on residential accounts, establish fee on commercial accounts, and establish disconnect procedures with fees.
And it also, I mean, this, this document that I prepared is not just 7-1A-2C, 7-1A-2B, changing it, but also 7-1B-6B and 7-1B-6C, which is the sewer portion. I don't know, I, I didn't look at the garbage this morning. They need, they need to.
My first question was, why, why not have a late fee on residential account? I mean, why?
I asked for that one to get rid of, well, you know, I cheat, I look at the co-op's procedures on a lot of things, just because they're already there. Uh, residents, I wanna make it easier to disconnect you if you're late, because right now, we're not disconnecting anybody. And that's what's getting people in trouble. The late fee, I don't know that it really matters, except it's just compounding, are we trying to get revenue, or are we trying to get people to pay their bills?
Trying to have an incentive, uh, pay their bills and bid to.
Incentive is if we turn off their water, they get it.
Maynor?
Yes, Maynor?
We are starting disconnecting.
We are starting.
They get, they get a letter, they get, um.
They get a little notice.
Yeah, they get the notice, um, and it's, you know, we don't have the past due payment by the end of business, they just say you're gonna pay off the next payment.
And I'm, I'm all for it. All for the disconnected. I don't think the late fee really is something, I'm, I'm not to a whole lot of money, and I just think it's more trouble than it's worth. Especially if you're looking at 10%. Right now, we're, not to get into the earlier discussion, we're charging the ski area 3%. We're charging our water area. That doesn't really sound equivalent, and I know the skiers pay on top.
There is one other counter you need to deal with. We were asked to approve or disapprove of this new ordinance, and we haven't got to that, all we did was forgive the bill.
That's what we're on right now, is the new ordinance. We just forgave.
We're only on, on the sewer side. We covered the water side, but we didn't pass the ordinance on it.
No, we didn't, we, all we did so far is we forgave the compounding interest.
Yeah. Yeah, on all utilities.
On all utilities.
All utilities.
Correct. This is because we've been dinged by the auditors twice with the way the ordinance has been.
The first portion covers water, the second portion covers sewer.
No.
No?
Yeah, there's two, there's actually two ordinances here.
Okay.
Being ordained by the governing body, that's the first one, that's the water. Being further ordained, ordained by the governing body, covers the sewer. And the only, the only reason to charge a penalty for interest is you don't want to get in the business of financing somebody, because that's, that's what you're doing. Then, then you might, if that's, you charge, you don't have an interest charge in addition to the penalty, do you?
No.
Do you have an interest charge in addition to the penalty?
No. That's what I mean, this does, this was a 10% ever.
You know, you could say, you know, any, any outstanding bill will bear interest at the rate of 38% per year, like, you know, the Wolf Sharkwood, you know?
Predatory.
Actually, they do it about 230%.
Yeah, predatory, huh?
But what, that's the only reason they have, that's the only reason they have a penalty for, is, is so you don't end up financing somebody's...
Yeah, but you think, because you're gonna cut them off on the 25th or 30th day, so the only thing outstanding is that bill from what you got cut off.
Probably just in one month, yeah.
So, so we definitely enter this 10% from the middle of the program.
But it only says, says own for the month's charge.
Correct.
So that's the correction.
So that's what's on the bills, right?
That's what.
So 10% for that month, if you don't pay us, how many days into the next month are we gonna turn it off? Fifteen days?
We usually give them a month or two.
If they're not paying, they're the 25th.
Of the next day, of the next month, then we're gonna turn it off.
So I say...
So you still got 10% penalty? Or at least giving them a month to get stuck in order, and then you just...
Yeah, 15 days seems a little short. You might be out there.
What's gonna be our, our, to turn it back on?
Some people still figure you'll get your bill and they don't pay you by check. Not everybody uses...
Plus a turn on. Really? But when we write this, we're supposed to turn on.
I don't want you to do that anymore.
Is that gonna be something set annually?
Okay, what, what's that?
When we put this plus a turn on fee, but we don't state it in dollars? Is that something we're gonna establish annually, or is that, do we need to establish...
You've got senior orders right now?
The turn on fee, if they've been disconnected, and then they say they paid their bill, we go to reconnect it, it's a $40 reconnect after disconnect fee.
So they bring their bill current, plus 40 bucks, then you, you'll go back out and turn it back on?
Yes, or a disconnect fee? No.
The, the bill was calculated on what day?
Will you do the, on 25th?
On the, that's, alright. You calculate on the 25th of each month what that month's charged. And then it is not due until 25, the 25th day.
Of the next month.
If not paid by the 25th day of the month immediately after the due date.
They have, it's, it's due by the 15th, but not considered late until the 25th.
Yeah, that's the next step.
Yeah, okay. And that, and that's clear enough for most of us. Okay, the, uh... Are we good with water? Did I ask something else?
You can ask on either one of them.
You want us to just single...
Yes. When I read through the seven, 1B, 6, we're talking about sewer, but we start having different language than we have in the water. The, uh, I'll catch up. Okay, like, in, in the first water fair, right in the middle of it, 15th day of each month, which immediately follows the mailing of the statement therefore. Same thing in sewer.
Sewer refers back to the water.
It's the bill. The statement thereof, and that's why the language changed.
It says, all sewer bills, not enough paid on the 15th, immediately follows the 25th day of the month, and that amount shall be added, paid there to sewer users. It says the, shall be added to and made part of the monthly water bill. So whatever, whatever calculation it is for the water bill, it's then a sewer.
And then on the disconnect of the sewer, I mean, disconnect, are turning off water needs to be a valve. How, how are you gonna disconnect the sewer? There's no valve in there. You're gonna dig up the yard?
You could disconnect sanitary service or water service.
I don't think we have to disconnect the sewer. But if we have to, if we shut off the water, that's going to get their attention.
It got what it's, it's almost like the original...
You could do one of the other. How much sewer are you gonna, you're gonna be using?
No water.
You're not getting any water.
Exactly.
You're gonna wash the well and...
Well, it says we're gonna do it, and then there's no way we can, other than digging the thing up.
This, this is the way it's set up in the ordinance now.
Okay.
And it's worked just fine.
Up until the auditors do this.
We've got a...
The sewer bill is calculated differently from the water bill.
I also said, I said, charge.
So you have to have that in there.
I treated the village May without notice, discontinued the sanitary service. In water, it is shat.
Okay.
There's a big difference.
So you go...
Big difference.
I, I missed that part. Because the only way I saw we could do it is in that backflow valve, like in new construction, you've got a, you've got a backflow...
That's been in ordinance since the 60s, in the ordinances. Every house in this village should have a backwater valve on their sewer lane. Leaving a house, that's been enforced, well, it shouldn't have been enforced backwater valve.
I don't think the old ones did.
There's stuff often that happens, that there's an old gate valve, how you just shut it down. When you leave the house, when you go out, you shut the gate, it's like a irrigation gate, you just close off the sewer line.
Well, anyway, this straightens out what we were doing wrong previously. We've forgiven the compounding, the, this puts everybody on notice, if you don't pay us, you're gonna, we're gonna turn your water off. Aren't there protected classes that we won't be able to turn the water off, people with different health issues and...
Not unless you said you're a self-regulated utility. PRC can tell the gas company, the electric company, you will not do this for whoever.
Okay, because they regulate them.
You're self-regulated.
Got it, got it, okay.
And I, I would note that the, in, in the agenda, the last sentence is not covered at all in the draft ordinance that I set up.
Yeah, we're not, we moved the late fee in this ordinance. And we're not establishing a separate fee for commercial. It's all water.
I just wanted to make sure you understood that it wasn't part of...
This ordinance is to just clean it up for the auditors, correct?
Yeah, that's, that's what it was so...
And then whether it's commercial, residential, you don't pay us, we have, we're going to have the right of this ordinance to turn off the water. I think that, that's fair. It's, it doesn't cost you anything if you pay your bills, that's how it should be.
You want two motions in this thing, or one?
Uh, it depends on how the motion is given.
I'll move to approve the change in regulations for seven, 1A, 2C, seven, 1A, 2D, seven, 1B, 6B, and seven, 1B, 6C as presented.
Okay, we have a motion by trustee Teeman to approve all the ordinance, all the ordinances as presented. Do I have a second?
I'll show.
Second by trustee Maynor. Any further discussion? All in favor?
It's a roll call, and is the ordinance changed?
No, no, all you're doing is authorizing the, you're gonna, we're gonna publish two weeks to this next notice, a notice of proposed ordinance. Then you got to do a roll call.
Okay, I stand corrected.
Okay, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Now we're, to destruction of records for New Mexico municipal record detention schedule 2021.003, I thought we ended that.
We already did that, we did it.
Oh, it's on there, too.
Paying the bill.
She really wanted to.
She did.
Yeah.
Okay, then we're up to number 10. Acknowledgement of the May 2021 bills paid and report.
I saw you.
Okay, we have a motion by trustee Mitchell to acknowledge the May 21, 2021 bills paid and report. Do I have a second?
I'll say.
Second by trustee Maynor. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
I agree with you.
I have a motion by trustee Mitchell to adjourn. Do I have a second?
We have a, we have a signature.
Yes, we do have signature pages, so nobody can leave ones.
And we can still...
Yes, I'm waiting for a second.
I think a second?
I have a second by trustee Teeman. All in favor?